Cold?
Not yet.
Cold?
No, I just... I looked at on camera.
You're too young to be cold.
I know, I know, I know. I know.
You're too young to be cold.
I know, I know.
It's cold outside.
I know, I know.
I'm not interrupting anything, am I?
How's it?
I'm not interrupting anything, am I?
Well, not necessarily. I have freedom of choice here.
That unexpected phone call?
Yeah. What is this?
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council. It is Monday, February twenty-four, two thousand and twenty. We are reconvening for open session. I'd like to announce that there was no reportable action taken during the closed session. It is seven o'clock by my watch, and I'm calling this meeting in order. Let the record reflect that all council members are present for tonight's meeting. For tonight's vacation, we will be led by Councilmember Ray Dutton. And for the Pledge of Allegiance, we will be led by Director of Planning and Building Services, Elizabeth Corpus. Please rise.
Please bow your heads. Oh gracious God, thank you for all you do. Please bless our actions here tonight and assist us in building a strong and caring community. May you lend us your wisdom to find solutions for the issues that become before us. We thank you for the opportunity to help others and the opportunity to try and improve our way of life. We ask you for your protection and blessings on our military men and women. And may they always return home safely to their families. In your name, amen.
Amen. Please place your right hand over your heart and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Item number nine, a city council announcement. So let me start that off. Vote centers throughout LA County are open for voting now through the presidential primary election on Tuesday, March third, including five vote centers located here in the city of Bellflower. Bellflower vote centers that are now open are located at Sims Park on Clark Avenue and Affinity Real Estate Mortgage Services on Rosecrad's Avenue. Three more vote centers will be opening on Saturday, February twenty-ninth, this coming Saturday. The first one is here at Bellflower City Hall in the green room upstairs. The next one is at Living Way A Four Square Church on Rose Street. And finally, the Salvation Army on Cedar Street. Voting hours from now until March second are eight AM to five PM. And on Election Day, March third, from seven AM to eight PM. The Bracken Stick Library is also a vote-by-mail drop-off location along with one hundred other drop-off locations. To find the closest vote center near you, please visit www.lavote.net. Let me repeat that. For questions or help finding a vote center, please feel free to call the City Clerk's Office at five six two eight zero four one four two four, extension two two seven one. Mr. Dank Coops.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In mid-March, households will be receiving official Census Bureau mail with detailed information on how to respond to the two thousand and twenty census. You will be able to respond in the census in three ways: online, by phone, or by mail. The census is an opportunity to shape the future of Bellflower as it provides vital information. It is critical that everyone is counted only once. Please do your part and participate in the upcoming census. For more information, you can call two thousand and twenty census.gov. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Coops. Councilmember Sunny Santayanes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. SCORE, which stands for Service Corps of Retired Executives, will be hosting a free small business workshop discussing how to make do-it-yourself video for your business. It's, of course, a group of executives who are giving back to our community. The training will cover tools and techniques for making your own video, lighting and sound tips, and actionable items to market your video online. This event will be taking place on Tuesday, March tenth, from six PM to eight forty-five PM at Selaco, that's Southeast Los Angeles County Workforce Development Board Office in Cerritos, located at one eighty-third and Studio Baker Road. For more details and to RSVP, please visit www.OrenesCounty.SCORE, that's S-O-S-C-O-R-E dot org. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Santayanes. Councilmember Ray Dutton.
Thank you, Mayor. The Bellflower Chamber of Commerce office will be hosting their morning mingle. It's a networking event tomorrow at Tuesday, February twenty-fifth, from nine to ten AM. This networking event serves as a great place to learn about the Bellflower businesses in our community. The Chamber office is located at one six seven three zero Bellflower Boulevard. And it's just off the corner of Bellflower Boulevard and Flower Street. Questions about the event or to join the Chamber of Commerce, please call five six two eight six seven seventeen forty-four. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Dutton. Councilmember Raymond Hamada.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's see, the city of Bellflower invites you to participate in the Bellflower Honors Program. This program offers an opportunity to honor past and present military personnel from Bellflower by dedicating a street pole banner. For more information, please contact Mike Machado at five six two eight zero four one four two four and the extension two two seven. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Hamada. Okay, we are going to skip over item nine B tonight, and we're going to move on to item nine C, which is a revenue presentation, which will be conducted by Ms. Anna Garin, Finance Manager for the city of Bellflower.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. Tonight's presentation is a standard annual update on the city's revenues. We will review fiscal year eighteen nineteen revenues and compare them with fiscal year seventeen eighteen revenues for major changes. The city's fiscal year is from July to June. We will also focus on general fund revenues and reserves. Then, we will compare Bellflower's revenue with five neighboring cities. And lastly, go over the economy and fiscal outlook. There will be a separate study session for the potential tax measures that are being evaluated for the November two thousand and twenty election. For fiscal year eighteen nineteen, the city's revenues totaled forty-eight point three million dollars. The revenues are for the entire city but exclude the trust funds, the municipal water system, and other internal funds and accounts. In comparison with fiscal year seventeen eighteen's total of fifty-one point six million, the revenue decreased three point three million dollars. The recurring revenues increased two point four million dollars that helped offset the decrease from one-time and grant revenues of four point seven million dollars and measure P U U T expiration of one million dollars. In this slide, we will go over the significant changes in individual recurring revenue sources. Road Repair and Accountability Act, SB one, revenues increased by nine hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. The city started receiving SB one allocations halfway through fiscal year seventeen eighteen to address basic road maintenance, rehabilitation, and critical safety needs on the state highway and local streets and road system. The SB one revenue is from the increases in fuel taxes and vehicle registration fees. Sales taxes increased by a total of eight hundred ninety-six thousand dollars. The special county-wide sales taxes, propositions A and C, and measures M and R, which are revenues dedicated to transportation and street-related purposes, increased by five hundred and fifty-eight thousand, while general fund share of sales taxes increased three hundred and thirty-eight thousand. California Department of Tax and Fee Administration, CDTFA, implemented a new sales tax software, and this caused some large delayed payments in fiscal year seventeen eighteen, inflating the revenue in eighteen nineteen. Property tax increased five hundred and six thousand, which can be attributed to the growth in the property values in the city. Interest income increased by three hundred ninety-seven thousand. Majority of the growth came from the increase in the interest rates in addition to the interest income generated by the bond proceeds received in January two thousand and eighteen for the regional transit center and parking structure. Building permits increased two hundred sixteen thousand dollars. Cannabis tax is a new revenue source for the city in fiscal year eighteen nineteen. One hundred sixty-nine thousand dollars were collected from tax prepayments recognized as revenue at the end of calendar year two thousand and nineteen and from five percent of the gross receipts of the cannabis permit issued were in operations. Cannabis permit and renewal fees also increased by one hundred sixty-four thousand dollars. On the other hand, utility users' tax decreased by one point three million dollars due to the expiration of measure P, a two percent U U T, and continued decline in the telecom sector. In the category of temporary and one-time revenues, as you can see in this slide, the one-time revenues received in fiscal year eighteen nineteen were significantly lower compared to fiscal year seventeen eighteen. Six point nine million dollars versus eleven point six million. The capital project grants increased by approximately three hundred thousand. In fiscal year seventeen eighteen, the city accepted an offer from Caltrans for the relinquishment of the Lakewood Boulevard in exchange for a one-time payment of four and a half million dollars. The city also received four hundred fifteen thousand dollars in sales proceeds from the sale of the eight eight zero nine Ramona Street property to partnership housing in fiscal year seventeen eighteen, while less than a thousand dollars was received in fiscal year eighteen nineteen from the sale of various personal properties. The amount of the municipal water system general fund loan repayment that council authorized through the budget process is two hundred twenty-four thousand dollars more than the loan repayment received in seventeen eighteen. Lastly, cannabis application fees decreased by two hundred ninety-nine thousand. Fiscal year seventeen eighteen was the first year the city started receiving cannabis permit applications, and most of the permits were issued in that fiscal year. Although some cannabis permits were issued in fiscal year eighteen nineteen, the number of applications received were much less in comparison to the prior year. In general, there are two types of revenues. Discretionary revenues with full city council authority as to how those funds can be spent. And these revenues are generally recorded in the general fund. In fiscal year eighteen nineteen, the city's discretionary revenues totaled thirty-one point one million dollars, or sixty percent. On the other hand, we have restricted revenues with restrictions being imposed on the city by law or granting agency requirements for various purposes, such as streets and transportation, economic development, housing, capital projects, and local law enforcement. The restricted revenues totaled twenty point five million dollars, or forty percent, in fiscal year eighteen nineteen. Where did our revenues come from? From the chart, we can see that the largest revenue source was taxes at fifty-six percent. This category includes property tax, sales tax, cannabis business tax, U U T, and other taxes. The next one is intergovernmental revenue at twenty-four percent. These revenues were mostly from capital project grants and special funding from other governmental agencies. The other revenue sources brought in twenty percent. Now, where did our funds go? The top three expenditures were capital projects at thirty-six percent, public safety at twenty-three percent, and public works at seventeen percent. Now to the general fund. As you are aware, general fund is the most important operating fund of the city. In fiscal year eighteen nineteen, general fund revenues and transfers in totaled thirty point nine million dollars. This was a decrease of two hundred ninety-three thousand from the preceding fiscal year. Total recurring revenues increased two hundred twenty-four thousand. And total one-time revenues decreased five hundred seventeen thousand. As you know, recurring revenue streams are much more important than one-time revenue sources. These major changes in recurring and one-time revenues have already been presented in the previous slide. In general fund, the five largest revenue sources are the property tax, sales tax, utility users' tax, fines, and franchise fees. These revenues totaled eighty percent of the general fund revenues. This chart shows the general fund revenue performance since inception of the last recession. The blue line represents the total general fund revenues, and it shows a five-year revenue decline with a seven-year recovery. This line includes measure P U U T and one-time revenues, except for sell a property. The green line represents general fund revenues if we did not have measure P U U T. The red line adjusts the blue line for inflation for twelve years, and it shows the loss of purchasing power due to CPI was about six point four million dollars in fiscal year eighteen nineteen. Regarding the utility users' tax, the telecom sector continues to be a major concern, with the U U T decline for nine years in a row. Since fiscal year two thousand and nine to ten, the telecom U U T has decreased fifty-five percent for the reasons cited on the right-hand side of the slide. The property tax is the largest revenue in general fund. This chart shows the distribution of property tax collected in Bellflower. The city receives six point six six cents of each dollar of basic property tax levy collected. Forty-eight cents are distributed to LA County and forty-five cents are distributed to schools. So most of the property tax dollars go to LA County and schools. The current sales tax rate in Bellflower is nine and a half percent. The city's share is one percent of taxable sales. So for every dollar in taxable sales in Bellflower, the city gets a penny. Based on the current tax rate, the remaining eight and a half percent goes to other taxing entities. This chart shows the general fund reserve for the past thirteen years. In addition to the eight million dollar contingency reserve, the undesignated reserve at June thirty, two thousand and nineteen was five point three million dollars. The property held for resale and development at June thirty, two thousand and nineteen was two point nine million dollars, consisting of three separate properties. In October, two thousand and nineteen, the property located at eight eight two seven to eight eight two nine Artisha Boulevard and eight eight hundred Palm Street was sold to Gold Coast Properties. And city council authorized the sale of the Greek Market property in August, two thousand and nineteen. At the beginning of the fiscal year eighteen nineteen, the available general fund reserve was twelve point two million dollars. By the end of the fiscal year, the reserve increased by one point one million dollars to thirteen point three million dollars. The major changes were the operating surplus of three hundred eighty-one thousand dollars and successor agency loan repayment of seven hundred seventy-two thousand. Comparing Bellflower's revenues with the five neighboring cities of Paramount, Lakewood, Narwak, Cerritos, and Downey, you can see that the revenues are highly limited for Bellflower, costing greater financial challenges in these cities. On a per capita basis, Bellflower's financial picture worsens. Bellflower has the least amount of revenue, with the neighboring cities having ten to one hundred and sixty-six percent more funds to spend on each of their residents. As an economic indicator, Bellflower's unemployment rate has improved very well, four point six percent as of December, two thousand and nineteen, which is very close to LA County's unemployment rate of four percent. Looking at the last quarter of two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and nineteen, Bellflower's median housing price dropped to five hundred forty thousand in two thousand and nineteen from five hundred fifty-five thousand in two thousand and eighteen. On the other hand, LA County's median housing price was six hundred fifty thousand as of the last quarter of calendar year two thousand and nineteen. Based on the California Fiscal Outlook Report published by the Legislative Analyst Office, California's economy is expected to continue to grow. However, the growth rate is expected to be slower in comparison to recent years. UCLA Anderson's third quarter two thousand and nineteen report states that California is expected to outperform the nation in terms of job creation and economic growth. However, the slowing national and world economies will take their toll on California's economy, and the effects will likely be seen in the latter part of two thousand and twenty. The effects of the coronavirus on the US economy is still unknown at this point in time. Financial experts are predicting that it will negatively impact the global economy, but its significance is yet to be determined. As previously mentioned, the potential tax measures that are being evaluated will be discussed at a future city council study session. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Garin. Good job, good job.
Thank you.
Mr. Hamada, any questions?
Maybe just one. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In talk of potential revenue coming to the city, the pending sale of a water system, does that bring a... If it was sold, obviously it would have been a much rosier picture for us. Yeah. But we've already...
We've budgeted for it. It's going to be approved during this two-year budget.
This one, yeah, that's what... I mean, other than that, I'm a little surprised about the home sale, you know, the price of the home going down. But again, it's probably the size of the unit and here in Bellflower versus maybe some of the other areas. But I've always seen it more as a... and which we've seen it, it's been a trend upward. So... But, you know, we're going to all keep working hard and, you know, bringing in new businesses and, you know, get some projects done. And so, you know... And the anticipated cannabis revenue for two thousand and twenty, what are we looking at?
So... For that one... We have projected numbers from the consultant, and the projected low is about one million dollars. That's the low estimate, and the high estimates are one point four to two point three million dollars a year.
All right. Okay, okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Hamada. Councilmember Ray Dutton.
Very good presentation.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Sunny Santayanes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mrs. Garin, I'm still not used to it.
Me too.
But I need to try to keep you calling me Mrs. Garin instead of Miss Francisco. So anyway, can you show the third chart again, the two thousand and eighteen nineteen variances? Couple of questions there.
This one?
The next one. There you go. Can you tell me again, there was something that you mentioned about change in the software? In capture, is that the sales tax or the property tax?
Sales tax software.
Sales tax, okay. So we got a benefit of a one-time windfall?
So there were some delayed returns that were not processed until eighteen nineteen, but they were actually for fiscal year seventeen eighteen, so we got the revenue for those in last fiscal year.
Okay. So do you know what portion of that three thirty-eight is attributable to seventeen eighteen? Roughly?
The revenue, sales tax revenue increase was pretty flat, so they were mostly due to the software change.
Okay, so most of this three thirty-eight is a one-time windfall, so to speak. Okay, so that's something that we cannot count into the future.
I...
That's what I was getting at.
Okay.
Okay. And then the interest income, this is based on earnings of our investment with the county and the state?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. And the rate is going down, right? So that's something we cannot expect to continue. And then I just want to point out on the next one, the utility users' tax, this, I just want to point out to our viewing public that measure P ended on March thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen. So basically, the one point three million is only for nine months, right?
So the decrease from the expiration of measure P U U T was about a million dollars. So the three hundred thousand was from other U U T revenues going down.
Oh, I see, okay. But still a big chunk of our revenue that's lost. Okay. And then the next page... The next slide, I just want to point out on the cannabis permit application, the four hundred eighty-five thousand dollars in seventeen eighteen, majority of that has been spent also because we hired consultants, right? In pressing the application. So it's not really money coming into the city's coffers. It looks high, I want to point out, that a lot of, a big portion of money was spent also
Yeah.
for the consultants. Okay, very good. Okay. Other than that, it's a very good presentation, very comprehensive, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garin. Mayor Pro Tem Coops.
Yes. So I would like for you to put up the chart that says general fund reserve. That's the one. And that one, to me, is one of our more important ones, because I always check with Tay to see how we're doing on our reserves, because this is our rainy day money. And you have a little explanation there. It says on notes, eight million contingency reserve, which is the constant number that we always have at the bottom. And I suppose at some point in time, since we've been working with that since oh six, oh seven, do you think that we should ever increase that amount? Because inflation certainly has taken a bite out of that reserve if we had to use it.
Last time I checked, eight million dollars was sufficient for cash flows and one point five million dollars for emergencies. What had happened was state negatively affected our cash flows before, but there was a change where our cash flow improved with the... What they did was they took some of our sales tax, and then they didn't give it to us on a monthly basis, but they gave it to us two times a year. That created a cash flow issue. That problem has been rectified. And if we also have large capital projects that affects our cash flows, and when we're monitoring those as well, six point five million dollars for cash flows was sufficient. But we'll continue to monitor to make sure that it is sufficient in the future years.
We had discussion also on how we were trying to make sure that we did not let our pension responsibilities and liabilities got away on us. I didn't see anything in here about we've actually done some pretty aggressive funding towards meeting those needs. Is that correct?
You're correct. We are allocating an additional five hundred thousand dollars a year for the next fourteen years or so, so that we can much more quickly defuse the pension liability.
When you listed, again, back to the notes that are written on the bottom of the general fund reserve, we talked about the cash flows, the one point five million emergencies. Property held for resale and development includes the former Greek Market property, two point one five. You're using that figure as the basis of what we paid for it?
Correct.
Not the basis on what we think we could sell it for?
Correct. Those are accounting the cost basis.
Because often we need to sell it for less than that to make the project go forward.
Right. So if we sell for more, it's a gain. If we sell for less, then we are lost on the financial statements.
And that brings me to the point, when we had the sale of the, what once was the Bloomberg Trailer Park, to the hotel operators, that happened fairly recent. So that's not included in this report.
Correct. That will be included in the next presentation, next year's presentation.
Because that ought to boost many of these incomes, but then I'm sure we've incurred some liabilities with our no ventures into homelessness.
Correct. That'll be reconciled.
Alright, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protem Koops. So for me, can we go to page ten? Perfect, great. So I, just a couple of things, I think Councilmember Hamada touched on it in terms of the cannabis sales taxes. So I'm encouraged to hear that we're projecting a sizable increase in those taxes. So I know it's taken a while to, for that to get up and running, but again, I'm encouraged with the fact that that's projected to go up. And at the same time, I, just to remind our residents that, that counter to initial suspicions that cannabis sales in our city were gonna be negative, to date, I have not heard of any incidences with regard to our dispensaries or any of our operations in our city. So I'm really, the reason I say that is because I'm really proud of our staff and I'm really proud of this council for going forward on such a controversial issue. But also, again, really to our staff and our sheriffs for keeping the promise and containing that spillover, that projected spillover effect of negativity, right? And not having it go on to communities. So I'm really, again, just kudos to everyone and the fact that we can turn that into a positive in our revenue stream is really good. So I'm really encouraged to see that or hear that we're projecting an increase on that. The other thing is regarding internet sales taxes, I've been seeing in the reports that those are starting to increase more and more, correct?
Correct.
So again, just for everyone that's out there, you know, that's a really good positive for our income stream. So the fact that we're seeing, you know, not only a slight increase, but it seems to be gaining more steam in terms of the collection process and we're starting to realize that more and more. So I'm really, really happy about that. So I just, again, wanted to touch on that on page ten. And then on page, can we go to page thirteen? So on this one, really it's more of just sharing with our residents. I know that most of us know, here know this, but many of our residents may not know this, that when it comes to property taxes in our city, for every single dollar, just a reminder, that for every single dollar of taxes that's collected for properties in our city, our city only takes shy of seven cents of every dollar. That's really important, because I think there's a perception that somehow that government is flushing money. That is not the case in Bellflower. That is not the case in most cities in LA County. So when you look at this breakdown, I just want to remind everyone that most of that money does not come to the city of Bellflower. Even those properties are within the city of Bellflower, so. And then lastly, if you can switch to page fourteen. And again, the same thing with sales taxes, just a reminder to all of us that, again, of our sales tax rate, which is currently nine and a half percent right now, we only get one cent of that here in Bellflower. And again, I share that because one thing I've been sharing with a lot of people in government is the fact that when you read a lot of the media reports out there that talk about how the state is doing really good money-wise, that is true, right? The revenue projection for the state is, has been beaten, I don't know how many quarters now, like every single quarter that the state has, what they thought was gonna be the best-case scenario, they've beaten it by billions of dollars, right? And that's kudos to the state, but that's not the city of Bellflower. The city of Bellflower is not the state. And the state relies a lot of income taxes. And that tax base that we get in Bellflower is not income tax. It's sales taxes and property taxes. So while the state is getting a lot of money from, thankfully, from the tech industry up in San Francisco and the Bay Area and also in the west side here in LA, that's not coming here to Bellflower. So when you read the news reports about how governments, local governments are flush with money, I just want to remind everybody, that is not the case. And I think if today's report shows anything, it shows that the fact that, kudos to our staff, kudos to our colleagues, that we're trying hard to generate revenue for our city, but the reality is that that narrative does not apply to the city of Bellflower, so. And if there's any questions by anybody in the public, please come and ask. I'm not seeing right now, but if you ever have any questions, we'd be more than happy to answer any questions. We're a public entity, everything's open book here. And I could absolutely share with you that, that we are not in the same state that the state is in. So again, thank you for this, so that when people see things, they're aware of what's going on. So with that, again, excellent report. Every time you conduct this, it's very easy to read. Even me, that is not as astute on this stuff, I can understand this stuff. So again, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any final questions or comments, gentlemen?
I got one.
Okay.
Tay, when we looked at, when the mayor brought up the internet taxes that we're gonna have entitlement to, I remember a figure of about ninety thousand dollars for the first year. Do you remember that?
Right, it was roughly that amount.
Right, so you're, we're anticipating based on what Mr. Mayor has said, that that is gonna increase significantly?
I believe it will be more than double that amount. Right, does internet sales tax due to wayfair case and subsequent state law, that goes into LA County pool and that pool allocation to the city of Bellflower has increased substantially because of that case and the law change.
So you're anticipating a hundred eighty, hundred ninety thousand dollars that we now do not receive?
Right.
Okay, that's cool.
We'll take it.
And that is something we'll go on infinitum. That's not a flash in the pan deal. That we should expect our part of that sales tax to continue, right? Or am I dreaming? Yeah.
I mean, yeah.
It's not a one-time revenue.
It's not, definitely not one-time revenue. It will be a continuing revenue. And it'll be, we don't report that separately. When we report sales tag, we report the total sales tax, which includes several thousand outlets we have in the city of Bellflower as well.
We don't know when the trend stops for the increased sales tax. We always, you know, we're in uncharted territory here. We're ten years of economic growth. That's three years beyond the last biggest one we've seen. So it's kind of interesting that the revenues continue, the sales tax revenue continued to trickle out.
Brick and mortar stores and shopping centers have not been as successful in the latter years. I would think that that would continue to grow.
They've been replaced by other sorts of other retailers. A lot more going out to eat, gas and the things that have sort of replaced them with the brick and mortar stuff. But this is also a replacement of the brick and mortar loss as well. It's gonna, it's gonna go as the general sales tax goes generally. Right now it's booming. We'll see how long that lasts, so. But you're right, it is, it is a permanent source.
Permanent source with a volatile possibility of how much. But I'm encouraged by the fact that I don't think this reported, this is so recent, you know, it's historical but in recent, but we do have some new sales tax producers in town. I think about In-N-Out and Dunkin' Donuts, others, anticipation of STG.
Right.
There's some light at the end of the tunnel.
Absolutely. No, I mean, I think the future is good and I think that we're, locally, we're gonna continue to see some growth just because of the stuff that's in the pipeline coming forward. How the overall economy goes, I can't speak to.
No, but there's some, you know, that's a pretty dormant lot over there at Ford West.
Ten, ten-plus years.
Right, so if we can bring that back to some semblance of an income stream, that'd be wonderful. That's all I have.
No, the future is bright for our city. It really is. Just a quick note on taxes, so I, one of the things I've been starting to initiate at the state level in Sacramento is for the need to revisit, frankly, the whole overall tax structure, right? Our tax structure right now is over forty years old, right? And I think it's really a remnant of yesteryear and not of today's economy. And again, not to get a little too technical here, but I think we need to revisit that. And so let's see where it goes for the rest of my term here, so.
It's gonna start with property tax.
Right, so anyways, thank you for your presentation. Great job. Alright, so let's move on to item number ten, public comments. Mr. Stewart?
This is a time set aside for the public to address the City Council on matters not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the City Council should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor and state your name for the record. If you wish to address the City Council on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching the podium as we review that particular item. You'll be given three minutes to address the City Council.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Anybody in the public wish to make any public comments today? If you could sign in and state your name for the record, sir?
My name for the record is Michael Allen. And I provided this handout for you guys. And Mayor Garza, I don't know if you were here in two thousand fifteen, but it wasn't just me, but several people came up and we asked about the apartment door tax. And this is a yearly tax owed to the city for any rental property, apartment per unit. And specifically, we wanted to know, or we asked, you know, why it hasn't increased to like every other city's apartment door tax for the last twenty-some years and why it hasn't been collected, you know? And, you know, I just came up and I asked the mayor at the time, you know, what, I explained that I think you could go back retro, you know, so many years back and collect it, but this is millions of dollars in taxes for this city that just aren't being collected. And I just wanted to, you know, you guys were just talking about taxes and maybe you can check that out. Because the most unbelievable thing was after we came up and spoke, you know, nobody even said anything about, hey, you know, maybe we need to start collecting that or maybe we'll do it next year. There's just nothing, so. Three minutes. You know, I gave you guys a sheet, right? You guys have it?
We do.
There's three numbers on here. You know, the top, the first number that's circled is a median pay for full-time year-round city employees. Now, this is all, this is two thousand fifteen. These aren't current, you know, and you see the number there, sixty-two thousand. That's without benefits, as we know. The next number below that is eighty-two thousand at the time, two thousand fifteen. This is the median pay and benefits for the year-round city employee, full-time. And then the number at the bottom, thirty-six thousand, that's the average median earning for the full-time worker resident living, you know, working in the private sector, doesn't have a city job. And, you know, I apologize, this is two thousand fifteen. You know, the new numbers are, current numbers are crazy, you know? The first number there, instead of sixty-two thousand, the median pay for full-time year-round city employees is, that's without benefits, one hundred and ten thousand dollars. And the bottom number, the person working in the small guy, the guy working in the private sector full-time, the average resident in Bellflower is like forty-one thousand dollars. And, you know, I just wanted to ask the City Council, you know, can anybody tell me what these city employees do to justify this outrageous compensation? I mean, you know, do you see the difference there? I mean, it's like the city pays like, you know, double and then with the benefits, it's like triple of the average person working, average resident working in the private sector. I was just wondering, I mean, you know, if you guys said, hey, you know, so-and-so, everything that they touch turns to gold, I could justify that. But, you know, it's just.
Fifteen seconds.
Fifteen seconds, alright. Well, hey, thank you, you know, I'll be a lot more organized and direct and to the point next time.
Thank you, sir. You did good. I think, I think it wouldn't be out of the blue to sit down with him and show him, because we do an annual survey on our rate structure and all that, so.
Sure, I mean, Mr. Shawn, if you want to sit down with us, I'll hopefully explain where the money goes and who's getting what and where and when. Anytime, just make the appointment with my office and we can spend a couple hours doing that if you want.
Thank you, Michelle, for coming this evening.
And Mr. Mayor, if I can just add, because we do a salary survey within our city with our neighboring cities, so that's gonna be a good comparison to show him also.
Absolutely. Mayor?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Let me make a few comments, too. Also, with that, I was gonna bring up the salary survey that we do every time we negotiate with the unions. We use that to set the pay rate. Bellflower is either in the medium or on the low end. All are, we're like a training ground. Our employees will leave to go to a higher-paying job in another city. So we're on a frugal level of wages here in Bellflower. And also with the business license, door tax, we do collect it, it's just low. And it's something that we do need to look at and we have been, over the last couple of years, looking at it. And so not to say that we're not collecting, it's not true.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dutton. Any other comments? Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Josh Murray. I'm here on behalf of Clifton and Bracken Seek Library. I'd like to invite everyone in the community to our upcoming Celtic Harp Solo Concert on Saturday, March seventh, two thousand twenty, from two to three PM in celebration of National Irish American Heritage Month. Join us for an afternoon of music with Peggy Scomall as she introduces us to the uniqueness and history of the Celtic harp. And I'm hoping to see a lot of people there. It should be a really interesting weekend, full of Celtic harp music. Thank you.
It's great. Thank you for sharing. Anybody else? Yes, sir. If you could state your name for the record and also sign in.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, my name is Pastor Nate Rucker.
Thank you, Pastor. Welcome.
I do apologize. I don't know the protocol. Nevertheless, I'm here for crime, crime watch. Nevertheless, I've been hit twice, well, three times in the last eighteen months. When I was living in the south side of Bellflower, I basically kind of secured the city myself because I have my own funeral motorcycle escort company slash security and I kind of cleaned up that area. But since I moved to the north side, it's kind of out of hand, if I may. I woke up this morning and my Cadillac converter was missing off my van. Three days prior to that, I knew I had a little noise that was going on. I thought maybe the pipe was just cracked. I could see a cut in it, but nevertheless, this morning when I woke up, it was gone. Six months prior to that, someone stole my motorcycle trailer off the back of my Hardy truck. Six months prior to that, they broke into my Hardy truck. They couldn't steal it because there's a chip in the Hardy truck. Nevertheless, I'm willing to do anything in my power to take back what belongs to Bellflower peace. And I have crime watch people that are willing to back me up to do whatever we need to do to make a change and a difference in our community. Meaning, I'm willing to do my part as patrol at nighttime if I have to. I am legal, I am licensed, I am insured. I don't, not try to be a cop, that's not my job, but I do want to take back my community and do the right thing and stop crime in our cities.
Want to make sure I respect your comments? So that complies with your comments? So that, sir, does that comply with your comments?
Yes.
I just want to make sure, okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
We asked Joel, maybe you want to talk to this gentleman about citizens on patrol?
Yeah.
You know that there's a volunteer at a Lakewood Sheriff for citizens on patrol for Bellflower?
I'm aware of that, yes.
Yeah, that's maybe what'd be the best thing for you to do if you're willing to do that.
I would be more than happy to.
Sounds like that's right up your alley, what you just asked for.
Yes, thank you.
No, I just want to say thank you for coming up here and for being willing to help secure our neighborhoods. I, I've said here many times that, you know, nobody guards our neighborhoods like the people that live in the neighborhood. So the fact that you're coming up here and willing to step up, it's really important, really huge. And I think there's an appropriate medium to be able to help the community out. And I think the program that Councilmember Dutton recommended is a really good avenue, so thank you again.
Can I ask what street you live on? What street was that we were talking about?
We're talking the off-street of Woodruff Place and Somerset.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I can add just also, have you been in touch with Neighborhood Watch in your area?
Crime watch, no, just.
Neighborhood Watch?
No, no.
Okay, this one, that's one avenue also that you can get hold of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, let's start one out there. We can start one out there.
Thank you.
And look at.
Mr. Hawkman is a gentleman opening that door. He'd be more than happy to introduce himself, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You got it. Thank you for being here this evening. Anybody else wish to come and make any comments? Good evening.
Gentlemen, I haven't been down here in a while. I typed up an item here and wish to give it to, so all of you can have it. It's basically over this Aztec mobile home park. It was a beautiful place twenty-five years ago and it's a pigpen now. And the only reason I'm doing this is because the people living there, a few of them, have asked me to step forward on this. Because if they bring up any hassles on it, they're afraid of being evicted by the manager there who's told them to shut their mouth. So I even listed out some items that maybe, because the city can't do anything in that park. It's a state deal. But I listed out some items and now it's time to go after child welfare and all of this, because you've got families with kids living in those vehicles that pay twenty-five bucks a month to park in that damn place. Now that's ridiculous. Health department, vector control, all kinds of stuff. It needs to be stepped on and I would even get to the MTA because the MTA owns the property. And then they can go after the damn guy that's got the lease on it and tell him to straighten it up and get rid of that city manager and pedophilist that he's got employed there. So that's the one item I wanted to clear up. The other thing is, the way you've been going with some of these handicap drives, you take Euclid and Alondra, where they put that new jut-out piece in for the bus. Well, the bus can't get in there without having half of it hanging out there, blocking the, blocking the one lane. So whoever designed that and brought that up is pretty, pretty dumb. The only way you can get out of it is to red-curb that whole damn curb there to get that bus out. Now, if you do that, now you've eliminated. To get that bus out. Now, if you do that, now you've eliminated parking for the little businesses that are there. Eucalyptus and Alondra. Take a good look at it and you'll see the disaster right there. The stupidest thing they've ever done.
Thirty seconds.
Now, huh?
Thirty seconds.
Well, I'm not worried about thirty seconds. Union Bank, when are we gonna get the parking lot back? Apartment business license. I've been beaten on for four or five years. Nothing's done yet. The gentleman spoke a little bit on it.
Ten seconds.
The cannabis thing. Don't give me ten seconds.
You've got three seconds, sir.
I don't give a damn. The cannabis, listen here.
Alright, your time is done, sir.
You got three, three, three minutes too.
Your time is done, sir.
You got three minutes too. So you better watch yourself. I'm gonna ruling for the attorney.
Alright, sir.
On this whole damn thing.
Your time is done, sir. Thank you for being here this evening. Anybody else wish to come up and make a public comments? Good evening, sir.
Good evening, members of the city council. Tonight, in this, the people's chamber, I am respectfully requesting your permission as a twelve-year former councilman and twice as mayor and as a World War Two veteran of the greatest generation that ever lived, which saved this entire world from domination by evil leaders of Germany and Japan to speak on an action enacted by this city council that would stifle me from doing so here, like I'm doing here tonight. I did not check my First Amendment right at the door before coming here tonight. I don't speak too much here anymore because I can't make the meetings at my age as I have too doggone many things left to do in a limited time span. And I'm trying to make the most of it. Hence, my request for your indulgence. I would want to speak about that five-minute limitation recently enacted by a majority, if it's okay with you. I'll try my best to speak for all the Bellflower's people's benefits. Is it okay with you guys if I exceed the three minutes?
Sir, unfortunately, uh, it's three minutes, so.
No, I'm asking each one of you permission up there, not as a group.
If you could direct your comments at me. Uh, so we've enacted a three-minute limit and you have a minute and thirty seconds.
Does this mean that uh, in the future that I can't come up here and speak about uh, Pearl Harbor Day and Veterans Day for the people? Because the city never recognizes or makes a speech about that business?
If you can do it within three minutes, sir, you're more than welcome.
Well, can I, can I go on with the fast?
Unfortunately, no, sir, because then I'd have to make exceptions for everyone else, so. You have one minute.
That's a lousy action you guys did. Okay, I'll try my best. Tell me when my five is up. I'm very much surprised such an action was taken. And being the people's elected councilman way back in the nineteen eighties, did not ever think I would have to address this item again as I was the one that proposed a reasonable time limit to be put in because oral commu- comment portion of meeting was very stifled by some councilman and mayor at that time before I was elected in the nineteen eighties. I had never wanted to be a politician because I was a public servant for America by being a G I Joe war veteran, World War Two, and a letter carrier in Bellflower for twenty-six years.
Fifteen seconds.
That was my service record.
Fifteen seconds, sir.
That's my five minutes?
Yes, sir.
Boy, that's a lousy business. You wonder why I enacted that then? Because that ain't right. People can just get up there and sign their name and, and say hello, goodbye, and that's about five minutes worth.
Thank you for coming this evening, sir. Anybody else wish to make any public comments?
Well, I may even run for city council to change that business.
Okay, sir.
How you like that?
Anybody else wish to make any public comments?
On your district.
Alright.
Because I think that's, I think that's a crime against the participating public of your city.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, uh, city council and staff. Um, Paul Fileberg. Um, I have my last item before you tonight on the consent uh, consent calendar. But really, I'm here to say, I want to say thank you. Um, it's been twenty years of developing in town. Um, six uh, projects, hundred sixty-eight homes. I've really enjoyed working with Elizabeth and a little bit with Tay and Lynn and, and of course, the city manager. Um, and I'm gonna be taking a break. Home building is not easy. Yeah.
I heard you're traveling to China.
Uh, not China. We're gonna go to the Caribbean and go sailing. And um, but I, I just want to say thank you. It's, it's been really a good relationship for me. I, I feel like I've been kind of your, your in-town builder, so. And I've enjoyed working here um, and appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fileberg. Anybody?
Mr. Mayor?
Absolutely. Mr. Cooks?
I just want to say, um, Mr. Fileberg, um, I'm, I'm glad that I heard you say that um, uh, you're taking a break instead of retiring because um, at some point in time, the last uh, few months, I heard that you're retiring. So with the words, you're taking a break, that's a, that's, that's sounded much better to me. And I, I want to thank you for trusting the city of Bellflower for uh, your developments here. And I must admit that one of your best development here was the Belmont Court.
Thank you.
And uh, I, I think that I would say that um, that triggered basically the um, the revitalization of downtown Bellflower. Because before that, um, a lot of businesses didn't trust the city. And once you and Jackie, I know it was very tough back then to negotiate and come up with a deal. But once you have the deal, I, I think it opened the doors for other developers in our city. So I really want to thank you for doing business in Bellflower.
Yeah, well, really thrilled to be, have worked in this community. So, thank you, Mr. Tony.
And uh, Paul, I want to also commend you. You made Bellflower better. You know, it's been twenty years since I bought my first home. I was one of your first buyers.
You were my first buyer.
It's a good thing you weren't on the council then.
We won't say what that price was back in uh, two thousand and one. You paid fair market value, but, but boy, prices got up.
But it doubled in price, so that's okay, you know. But no, you, and sincerely, I want to thank you. And as uh, Councilman Sanion has indicated, you were the nexus for bringing downtown Bellflower back to what it has become. Because you stuck your neck out. We all stuck our neck out.
Yeah.
To try to put that together and then it worked. And then you went through a recession and things weren't working and you couldn't get out of Cortina quick enough and.
Yeah, the ups and downs of home building.
And then you laid in the bushes for ten years waiting for things to come back and all the interest didn't go to the point where you couldn't do it, so.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we still have the future expansion to uh, with the Sunray, so um, I haven't checked on when that development agreement expires, but it's uh, we, how many years? A few more years, still good, so.
You don't stay in the Caribbean too long.
Right, yeah.
No, but uh, it's a pleasure to have you as a friend and as a contractor of quality. We often use your abilities to uh, put together quality projects. We always knew that they were gonna look fantastic. And the artwork you put into the last two were magnificent.
Yeah, they, they turned out great.
And uh, we get compliments from other cities that, who did that? And uh, it raised the bar for all the developers that would come in here and decide that they couldn't just put in a minimal apartment-looking development and expect it to go.
It takes, it really does take trust on both sides.
Right, but it worked out. It's been a good relationship. I hate to see it end. I like to think that you're still gonna be out there. But uh, I want to thank you personally and collectively. You did make a big difference in our town.
Thank you.
And uh, we're, it's fun to be able to go to other city functions in other cities and recognize the changes that have occurred. It didn't happen overnight.
No.
I mean, it's twenty years to get to this point. We're not finished yet. And you see things coming on, but you know.
No, but it's really, it's going exponentially better now.
Right, you know, but we just had to get over the hump there. And when you think, when Steelcraft came in here and said, well, you know, we want to play and then.
Yeah, that looks awesome too.
And then the In-N-Out one, and we're gonna get this deal at the exchange with the restaurants and the brewery and um, it's gonna continue to grow. And I want to thank you for your participation.
Well, thank you, Dan.
Hey, Paul.
Yeah, hey.
Since you're up there, since this rose, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to convey my thoughts. Again, Paul, we haven't known each other as long as maybe some of the others, but.
Well, we've known a long time, though.
Again, I've been on, you know, again, I was on the planning commission for ten years, so I think that's when it started and uh, and uh, just uh, again, senior project, knowing that, again, again, you were working on the next one. I mean, it, 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 it would always instill confidence in, I mean, in us. And uh, we knew that we're gonna get a high-quality project, you know, it's gonna be done right, it's gonna look great. And, you know, and that, again, you were gonna work with us, so. I know you got a little grayer since I've known you. But, but every great guy deserves a vacation, so.
Yes, yeah.
Paul, yeah, take care and, I mean, we'll see you around, so.
Thank you, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Fileberg, I could just make some comments. I, I wasn't here when you started here. But I know, being in business, that it takes, sometimes it just takes that one person who's willing to make a bet. Right? And you did on Bellflower. And so I think you have a lot to be proud of in terms of the progress we see now. And to know that it started with you, you have a lot to be proud of. So hopefully, you'll keep coming back. Hopefully, you'll invest back in our city. Um, and again, it's, it's been an honor to, to work with you, so.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Wish you one for you.
Thank you, Paul.
Okay, great. So uh, any other public comments? Alright, sir. You've already had your three minutes, sir. You've already had your three minutes, sir. Sir, if you continue, sir, to disrupt the meeting, I will have you escorted out. Okay, sir. Alright, if you don't mind, Lieutenant.
You don't want to give one of uh, a veteran proper time, but give that guy ten minutes.
I think the attorney needs to make a ruling on who's got three minutes and who's got three minutes.
Alright, sir. We've already had your time to speak, gentlemen. You guys were told of the, of the rule in the beginning, okay?
Why don't you just leave? I don't need you here.
Have a good evening.
Why don't you adopt that tomorrow? If it ain't broke, we can fix it.
Alright, gentlemen. Have a good evening. Alright, so uh, item number eleven, public hearings, we have none. Item number twelve, ordinances and resolutions for consideration, we have none. Item number thirteen, consideration items, we have none. Item number fourteen, consent calendar.
Um, we would ask for folks to pull items off. They want to be considered separately, or if there's any uh, recusals that you want to make, let us know now.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to pull um, item fourteen E, just for a comment.
Okay, so item fourteen E, so do you want a separate vote, sir?
No, separate vote.
Okay. So uh, let's uh, any other items to pull, gentlemen?
Nope.
Conflicts, nothing? Okay, so why don't we take up item fourteen?
Oh, sure, thank you. Uh, just for uh, confirmation, Mr. Stewart, on item fourteen E, um, the one for Mr. Fileberg, this is basically similar to what we gave them on Belmont Court.
Identical.
Identical, okay, that's all. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanion.
So that's something that we have given already in similarity. Alright, thank you.
Okay, so uh, having um, addressed item fourteen E, I didn't hear any recuses or conflicts, so uh, would you like to make a motion regarding item fourteen?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any uh, without objection, that'll be the order? So item number fifteen, council reports. Why don't we start off with uh, Mayor Pro Tem Coops?
Alright, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So tonight, I would like to ask that we adjourn our meeting in memory of Edward James Mirsma. Longtime Bellflower resident, born November eleventh, nineteen twenty-four in Hall, Iowa. Passed away on December ninth, two thousand nineteen, at the age of ninety-five. Ed loved music. He was always a uh, player of the harmonica and saxophone. When he was seventeen years old, he started a singing group. He and uh, he moved out here to California in nineteen fifty-six. And uh, he worked as a farmer in a factory. He owned and drove catering truck. He al- also owned a Christian bookstore that is located where uh, right next to uh, the exchange. And uh, he conducted business there for many years. It became sort of the spirit church. Ed had humble beginnings, but he was a very successful man. Uh, he was always available for comment and helping the city. And he's survived by his wife Jean, four children, Jim, daughter Debbie, son Dick, and Jan, six grandchildren, and five great-grandchildren. So our deepest sympathies and heartfelt condolences go out to the entire Mirsma family. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Coops. Councilmember Dutton?
I want to wish everybody a good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dutton. Councilmember Hamada?
Yes, uh, quickly. Um, I just want to give a shout out to these St. John Bosco freshman class. Um, they came out on the fourteenth to Sims Park. And they helped the uh, city um, spread out the mulch over the uh, the old um, again, youth center uh, lot there. And so they did a great job. And um, I had a chance to, to meet the kids and also the staff. Again, they were all coaches, so they were all freshman coaches. So I had a good time with them. Uh, so, and uh, just uh, and that's a sad way to um, on the topic of sports, uh, again, uh, I was with the mayor and the Mayor Pro Tem at the, at the Greater Bellflower Little League opening day, so uh, um, I'll let the mayor expand on that if you'd like, so. But that's all I had to do for the last couple of weeks. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And, and thank you. You, you've been under the weather for a while and you keep trekking for our city. So thank you so much, Councilmember Hamada. Councilmember Santiness, sorry.
Uh, thank you. I thought you forgot me already.
That we've forgotten you.
I know. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to echo your, your announcement uh, earlier regarding this uh, election. Uh, please vote. Uh, it's very important. If you look at the ballot, there's three ballot measures. And uh, please vote your conscience. And I already voted. I mailed my ballot yesterday. And so I'm good. So I really encourage everyone to please vote, no matter what. Vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Santiness. So for me, uh, just a couple of quick ones. Um, for in terms of homelessness in our city, uh, our city is still uh, looking for funding for our homelessness efforts um, in the long run. So uh, I had a meeting with the senior policy director for the U S Department of Housing and Urban Development to see if we can work with the federal government to start uh, helping us with, with our programs and what we think would be a model for other cities to follow in the future. Uh, that was on February nineteenth or February twenty-first. This past Friday, I, in lieu of uh, the fact that SB fifty, the housing bill that I've been mentioning, was killed, um, the L A County delegation, meaning every single member of the legislature that represents L A County convened uh, this past Friday. And I was one of three people that was invited to make a presentation to them in terms of housing solutions for our state. So again, it was a real honor to represent our city and to be entrusted to make those types of recommendations that could uh, potentially benefit our state. Um, so that happened on the twenty-first. And then lastly, on twenty, the twenty-second, as Councilmember Hamada mentioned, uh, he, Mayor Pro Tem Coops, and myself uh, attended the Greater Bellflower Little League uh, opening ceremonies. It's, I, I tell people, it's one of my favorite events to attend. Uh, just seeing the community come out, seeing our youth, the excitement in, even though the day itself was pretty overcast and I know it started raining later. Um, and nonetheless, it did not dampen uh, the spirit. And we got a really good reprieve that morning. Um, so it was a fantastic event. And I want to commend all the organizers, all the parents, all the coaches who give so much to continue that, that nice tradition, not only for our city, but other cities, but especially here in Bellflower. So again, thank you to uh, Mr. Baker and Pete that put that together for that. So with that, um, item number sixteen, we're gonna adjourn in memory of Mr. James, Edward James Mirsma to the next regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council at five thirty P M on Monday, March nine, two thousand twenty. Meeting is adjourned.